Recording in progress.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to a regular session of the Goldenale City Council meeting for February 21st, 2023. For a roll call, we have one council member that has asked to be excused. Lauren Maker will be away tonight. Do we have a motion to excuse him?
So.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to excuse Lauren Maker from attending the regular city council meeting for February 21st, 2023. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the closed public comment. This is for only items that are on the agenda for the business side of the meeting. Is there anybody here, anybody online? If not, we're going to go to the public hearing and, well, I had your name there for a minute, Mr. Alex Capron, who presented last night, to give us an update on the Shoreline Master Plan for this public hearing. Mr. Capron, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here tonight for the joint public hearing with Department of Ecology. I have a brief presentation and then, yeah, I believe we can open up the public comment period for verbal comments here. Go ahead and share on screen. Oh, Sandy, I believe, it looks like you have that disabled.
Well, would it be a good idea if, real quick, I made a motion to approve the Agenda and Consent Agenda? Should we do that?
That's after.
Oh, that's after.
It's after, yeah.
Oh, okay.
But we will need a motion to excuse Phil.
Oh, I didn't even realize.
No.
That's my fault. Sorry.
I saw it moved and we excused Phil on second half.
It's been moved and seconded to excuse Phil Ontivettos from attending this regular session tonight. All in favor?
Here we are. So, yeah, a bit of this is going to be a rehashing slash repeat of the introduction that I provided back in October of 2022. So just giving a background of the Shoreline Master Program update. And then I'll also provide an update on our recent work to date and then the upcoming steps for both ecology, initial determination, and then a local approval for this period of campaign. So, yeah, just to start, what is the Shoreline Master Program? An SMP is based on a set of, yeah, policies and regulations, but it's based on three principles. One is environmental resource protection along state shorelines, also to promote public access, use and enjoyment opportunities along the shoreline, and then give priority use to those water-dependent uses, so those that require a shoreline education. And, yeah, all development within shoreline jurisdictions still needs to protect critical areas and then ensure no net loss of shoreline ecological functions. And as I mentioned, yeah, ensuring water-dependent uses have a priority. So where does an SMP apply? So shorelines of the state are, yeah, waters that, within the city of Goldenale, this is the Little Clickitat River, which meets the threshold of the shoreline of the state, which is 20 cubic feet per second mean annual flow, as well as lakes that are 20 acres or larger than marine shorelines. So within Goldenale, this is upwind areas that are within 200 feet of the ordinary high water mark, in addition to many associated wetlands, and then floodway areas and up to 200 feet landward of the floodway, one within the 100-year flood plain. So, yeah, there are some areas in Goldenale that capture that addition period. So what is a periodic update? So as mandated by the state, SMPs are to be updated every eight years, and the city is a little ahead of schedule with the recent adoption in 2018. This periodic update is a grant-funded update through this biennium, which I believe started in July or June of 2021 and extends to June of 2023. And so now, yeah, this periodic update is focusing on amendments to state law, any changes to local plans, regulations, and then any best available science. So it's really a minor update in nature and allows jurisdictions a chance to provide updates that better sync with current practices and regulations. So this is key here, that the SMP periodic update won't go back and reevaluate the ecological baseline that was established as part of the comprehensive SMP update. So it's not going to look at no net loss since 2018 that may have occurred from development that has been permitted in shoreline jurisdiction. So, yeah, again, as I mentioned, it's not a major update. It's making sure it's consistent with state law. And unique to this, periodic update is, as it is, a joint process with the Department of Ecology. So our project elements here, we have developed a public participation plan. There's a dedicated city website. It's easiest just to search Goldenale SMP update or Goldenale SMP on an internet browser. We've also provided a periodic checklist and the proposed amendments here as part of this update throughout this joint public comment period. And we are here tonight with the public hearing. So we're here to observe any verbal testimony from attendees. And then after the close of the joint public comment period, we will submit to Ecology for their initial determination of consistency, which results in required and recommended changes to the SMP. And with that, we would make any last changes to the SMP prior to the city's adoption. So just to ensure, the SMP, we want to make sure it's consistent with state legislative amendments. As I mentioned, the critical areas regulations are appendix within the SMP. And there was some recent wetland buffer guidance back in July of 2018, which we'll talk a little bit more about in a bit. Also ensuring consistency with the comprehensive plan and the municipal code and then any other addition issues. So jumping into the legislative amendments, again, these are pretty minor. This is kind of the highlights version, but definition-wise, amending the development definition not to include disanlighting structures. So if there is a standalone activity where it's demolition, it isn't considered development. It would not need to go necessarily through a shoreline permitting process. Also substantial development, the cost threshold has increased. The consumer price index is set every five years by the state, and it's jumped now from 7,000 for development to 8,500. And this doesn't include exemption or exemptions. So there's exempt development that's listed in the Washington Advisory Code that's already within the SMP. So those are separate. Like a new single-family home would potentially be exempt development so long as it doesn't require a shoreline conditionally used permit or shoreline clearance. Also, the definitions for non-conforming uses and structures have been split out. This is a recommendation, again, from Ecology in the state, is to have separate definitions. And this refers really to general development that was legally permitted prior to the adoption of the SMP in 2018, but now is not conforming, whether it be use, it's a structure, it's a buffer, or the lot size. And then, yeah, finally, on this portion, for exceptions, these are activities that are really rare in nature that don't require Shoreline. They're already administered by the state. And a couple of examples, an environmental excellence project by the Department of Ecology that's already managed and administered by Ecology. Also, there's an environmental renovation project that's, you know, an exception and, again, is managed by another Department of Ecology for that process. So looking at the wetland buffer guidance, and I can actually show a slide here of the proposed edits, kind of the highlights. So in 2018, Department of Ecology moved towards lumping habitat scores of three to four and five into one category. So they looked at a bunch of reference wetlands statewide and determined that lower-functioning wetlands have the opportunity to essentially have a reduced buffer, so long as minimization measures for wetlands are met. And some of these minimization measures can be directed lights away from the wetland, ensuring stormwater runoff hits the wetland buffer and not directly within the wetland. So there are some best management practices along with this amendment, only within shoreline jurisdictions. So that's a key point here. So the critical areas regulations within shoreline jurisdiction, Appendix A, have this wetland buffer guidance amendment. And in comparison here, you can see that at the end here. So you have a 75-foot buffer for this habitat score three to four, and then it increases by 15 feet if it's a habitat score of five. And really, that should only be 75 feet per habitat score between three and five. And that's across the board until you get to a category four wetland, and the buffer actually stays the same. So it's a minor change, but it results in slightly smaller buffers for those types of developments, you know, a less valuable wetland. And then we did review the comprehensive plan and municipal code, and we didn't see any inconsistencies as part of this periodic check. And so here we are tonight. This is the joint public hearing, and we've had this joint public comment period. This has been noticed. Department of Ecology has also provided their notice. And so that comment period has run from the end of April 24th to February 22nd. This is the key time to provide public comment. So by end of day tomorrow, if there are no public comments, further public comments that have been received, that would be the close of this public comment period. And then following that closure, comments that have been received will be responded to. It will be a comment response matrix that will be assisting the city with, and that will be submitted along with any changes to the SMP as a result of public comments. That will be submitted to Department of Ecology for their initial determination. And that's tentatively for March. So Department of Ecology, I believe, has a 30- to 45-day timeline for that. And so that binds us up to mid to late April, receiving the required and recommended changes from Department of Ecology, and that would be the version that will move forward for its local adoption this year. And, yeah, with that, as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, best way to find all of these materials is doing a search, Goldenale SMP, in your internet web browser. This is the log, you are out here, but that is the official page. I might be able to pull it up, but this has all the documents that you'll find that are proposed as part of this update, and that is the city contact. So I guess there's a couple of parts here, so I'm here and available to answer any questions folks have, but I can also pass it back off to the city before the start of the public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Capron, very much. That kind of update helps us. Are there people either in the chamber or on the line that wish to make comments now in this public open hearing? I don't see any further. Any from the council that wishes to make any comments on this process? We appreciate all the Ecology's done to walk us through this, too. Thank you, Eric.
Well, Baron, excuse me. Baron Swine, did you have a comment, Pat, or anything?
No.
Okay, if not, we've had no public comments, and we will close the public hearing for February 21st, 2023, and look forward to the next step in this process. There's no action needed as far as the motion at all, so we will move on now to...
Thank you, Alex.
Yes.
You're welcome. If she'll see Brenda with Department of Ecology comes in...
She's here. I'm here.
Oh, she...
Yeah, I'm here, Alex. He was canceled.
Oh, she's here. Stand down. All right. Well, thanks very much. Yeah, I will, I'll be around for a few minutes longer if anyone else has questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the update, too. Very good.
We hereby close the public hearing. We'll move on to the agenda, and there are a couple of amendments that I need to make. The first one is in the paragraph at the top of the page, that people can call in by 6:45 in the evening. That needs to be 5:45. We'll change it, and it'll probably stay that way for a long time. The next item, though, is to amend the Agenda to announce that there will be an executive session this evening, and I want to give a statement that explains it and will also help me out what the purpose of this particular executive session is. It has to be stated. This is pursuant to RCW 42.30.110 bracket two, that before convening any executive session, the presiding officer of a governing body shall publicly announce the purpose for excluding the public from the meeting place and the time when the executive session will be concluded. The executive session may be extended to a stated later amount of time by the presenting officer. The city council will be holding an executive session pursuant to this RCW 42.30.110 bracket two litigation. That's because the agency reasonably believes there may be commens by or against the agency, the governing body, or a member acting in an official capacity, that there may be some legal action against them. And that's why we justify litigation, is the reason we're justifying an executive session tonight. Pat, do you have an estimate of the time we will use?
We won't do that till... What do you think? 20 minutes? 15 minutes?
Probably 30.
30 minutes? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Now, we have the approval of the Agenda and the Consent Agenda, the approval of the Agenda as amended, and the Consent Agenda. Do we have a motion or discussion and questions?
I believe that we accept the amended Agenda and Consent Agenda.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Agenda as amended and the Consent Agenda. Close the session of city council for February 21st, not 2023. Any further discussion or questions before we vote? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Agenda is approved and the Consent Agenda. We'll go on now to department reports, and we'll begin with Pat Munyon, the director of the Goldenale Public Works Department.
I'll make it fairly quick as possible. So we're working on what's called ASR Aquifer Storage Recovery. This is just some preliminary work that we're trying to get an application with Department of Ecology. We've talked to Department of Ecology. They're willing to fund it. We just need some more information on the Dingham well, which, my understanding, back in 2005, the city got some emergency grant funding to put that well into productivity, and then somewhere along the line, there was a bunch of water line ran out to that area and everything, and it did get tied together, but the project never got really completed due to a test pump issue when they were test pumping the well. They dried some wells up around it. And speaking with Carl Inyard to get an update on that a little bit today, he explained to me that at one time it was an irrigation well, but the people who used it as irrigation well didn't use it that long. And when they did a long drawdown test pump, I think they're pumping it right around 400 gallons a minute, that it dropped the aquifer down, and one of the wells out there never did recover. So there's some reason to believe that it's a very confining aquifer for aquifer storage and recovery, and that's what you can look for. Is, what that does is during the winter months, usually the permits are from the November 1st through the end of February or somewhere in there, depending. We would take water that comes from our spring source and divert it and recharge that aquifer. So where we reach peak season demand, which will be probably later June, July, August, and September, that we have stored water down there. So at that time, we would start drawing that water back out there to keep up with that seasonal demand, which right now sometimes gets a little tight with the pumping systems we have, particularly in a drought year. The city has made it through, but it's really marginal. So that's kind of the goal of it. What we're looking at doing right now is Doug's going to go out there and in the next two days, get it ready so we can turn that pump on, because it hasn't been even fired up since 2005, to see if it's actually functioning. So we need to get the power back to it and see what kind of work we're going to have to do to it just to even run the pilot test. If the pump functions, we will end up digging down to a valve cluster, which we believe on, it's a T-valve cluster, and we believe one of the valves is what's called a blind flange. It's just there for future use, and we will tie in a line there. And we've been working with Department of Ecology and Department of Health, but we don't want this water coming into the water system at this point, so we'll dump it to waste on the ground. And it'll end up coming, the water will end up coming through the canal that was built back in 1960s up in the industrial park area and end up in the Clickitat River, if it makes it that far. I mean, that's quite a long run for it. It probably also will settle into the ground between there and between Dingham well and the river. So tentatively, that's the plan right now, and this is just a test to determine if it is feasible source in confining aquifer to use as we need it. It'll all come down to what we find out in the pilot test and what the storing capacity is. Is there enough storage capacity down there to make it work to city's time? And this is, will be being paid for by Department of Ecology.
Anything further, Pat?
Incubator business, billing, it's being advertised right now, so hopefully by mid-March, we may end up calling a special council meeting to award the contract as quick as possible so we can get them ordering, because the timeline is a ridiculous timeline, but it is the parameters of the grant we have to work with. So, and we're already hearing from the contractors complaining about that, the timeline, but it is what it is. So I'll keep you informed on how that's going, and I think that's it for now. We're going to have a long talk later, so...
Anything further?
No.
Thank you, Pat. Thank you. Well, now I'll hear from our police chief, Jay Hunsaker.
I only have one thing tonight. On the 17th, our lateral officer started, Ed Gunion. He came over from the Westside Benjy Police Department. He came with 18, a little over 18 years of experience, and we're very, very happy to have him, and we put him straight to work on patrol. So he's on board, and we're going good. So that's all I have for tonight.
That's terrific. Thanks, chief. Thank you very much. We don't have a representative from the fire department here this evening. Sandy, did you have anything from Treasury?
Nope, not tonight.
Thank you. Appreciate all the hard work.
Thanks.
Next item on the agenda is the council business. The first item is a Washington exclusive right to sell listing contract with J&amp;M Realty, and I'll turn that over to Jay. Jay?
Pat.
Pat Munyon. You almost got it.
Mr. Inley's busy right now, so...
I'm just going to start saying I'm here.
So, yeah, what we did is we reached out and got some proposals from realtors. We did have staff review those independently and score them, and J&amp;M Realty was the overwhelmingly selected candidate. What this is for is the city has industrial property up there. We have people interested in purchasing younger industrial property, but we have the value listed on the property. So this is to get a realtor working for the city on our side to help promote the property and establish realty prices for the property. We have a business that is interested in relocating here and is really wanting us to get them the information of the value of the property so they can relocate here. In addition to that, we did get contacted today by, can't think of the company's name that's up there now that has the windmill.
Evenroll?
Yeah.
Evenroll?
Yeah, they want a meeting with us next week, I believe it is.
Thursday.
Thursday, next week.
Thursday, next week.
Okay. To me, to discuss further expansions up there. So there, at least, there's some activity happening up in the industrial tract, which is good news for the city. Creates jobs and revenue for the city, so...
Excellent. Question? Any questions or comments?
Yeah. What happened to the notion of leasing as opposed to selling?
What happened to the notion of leasing as opposed to selling?
That's up to you guys if you want to do it. I would love to do that, but every time I bring it up, somebody, their businesses are not interested in it, which is unusual, because most businesses are, they're out of lease. They think it would be more appealing if we had structures there for them to lease, but we don't. They just, they're a property, the raw property is what they're interested in. But that's completely up to your guys' decision if that's what you guys want to do.
Well, I know there's been a lot of discussion relative to that. I was just curious. I guess we cover that bridge or close that bridge when we get to it, as far as any agreements that we may make with the developers.
On that topic is we, to sell the three bigger lots that are on the north side, we have a canal between the road and that. That's something that at some point, maybe if we do sell, some of that money should go to improving at least one or two crossings on that north side so that makes those lots more valuable and sellable. Because right now, if somebody comes in to buy that, they're going to negotiate it way down for the cost to get across that, because it's going to be expensive. I'd have to go look up, I'm assuming, this is my best guess, is that canal that was built in the 60s by the arctic ore engineers is designed for 5,000 cubic feet per second of flow or greater. So whatever we do in there, you know, we're definitely going to have to maintain that standard, which could, you know, be big culvers or bridges, but I would prefer culvers over bridges.
Any other questions or comments? Steve, did you have something outside?
No. I've never seen water running down that canal.
I think it has.
You think so?
I've heard stories about it, yes.
The last time I heard it was 96.
It will happen, anything, yeah, pretty sure.
Oh, yeah. Any other comments or questions before we call for a motion? Do we have a motion on this item?
I move to approve the Washington exclusive right to sell listing contract with J&amp;M Realty. Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the Washington exclusive right to sell listing contract with J&amp;M Realty. If there are no further comments or questions, we'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passing unanimous. The next item of business is the agricultural use agreement, and Pat will give us the details on that particular item.
This is the property that used to be the old wastewater irrigation land. The city's been leasing it out for years to Mr. Seabird, that lease ended December 31st of 2022. We put it back out for request. We got three interested bids. The highest bid was, there again, Mr. Seabird, by actually a pretty substantial amount for a total of $4,004 annually. That's double of what it was before. We also put in the contract a 2% annual increase, and the contract would be good from starting this year through December 27th.
Any questions or comments? I think Mr. Seabird has leased that land for a number of years.
Him and his father, yeah.
If there aren't further comments or questions, we'll call for a vote, well, we'll call for a motion. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the agricultural use agreement between the city of Goldendale, Washington and Chris B. Seabird.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agricultural use agreement between the city of Goldendale, Washington and Chris B. Seabird. Any further questions or comments? If not, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion is unanimous. The next item on the agenda is the report of officers. I'll begin with city council, and I'll begin with Andy.
All I have, I will not be at the next meeting. I'll be out of town. That's all I got.
That's a minimal.
Yep.
So Roberto's not here, and we'll go to Mylan Walling.
Well, thank you, mayor. I'd like to make a comment on, last week, the mayor and I, we were in Olympia, and we were working on the, getting the funding for the ramp for the observatory. We had five meetings, and one included the lieutenant governor, and we're working with the state parks commissioners. And again, we're just trying to get the funding. It's in the capital budgets, and so we'll just have to wait and see. I'll be in touch with the commissioners here, state park commissioners here later on this week and kind of get them an update. We also talked about the funding, future funding for the airport, and so we did a lot of conversations on that. So anyway, I think we felt that we had some good meetings, and so we'll just have to wait and see what happens. So anyway, that's what I have, mayor.
Thank you, Mylan. Thank you. And Roberto's not here.
Okay, thanks, mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to let everybody know about a program that's going to be coming up at our local library. It's called the Teen Life Skills Program, and it's meant to cover various practical skills that teenagers need. For example, one day will be about health and wellness, where people from the hospital will do a presentation. And the one that I'm helping with has to do with civics, things like getting registered to vote and the importance of voting and being active in the community. So it'll be a good program. It's going to be on, the part I'm involved in, the civics day will be on April 21st, it's a Friday, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. And they're looking for some more possible council members or other community leaders to get involved, and if you want in on that, you know, let me know, and I'll, if you want some more information about it, let me know. And I think it'll be a worthwhile thing. It's only a couple hours. We'll have one more meeting before that, just to get all the logistics set up and stuff, but you know, it's something that we can contribute to, helping teenagers learn the importance of government and civics and being active voters and being involved in the community. So if anybody has any interest in questions on that, let me know after the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Johnston.
Just, I would like to know about the next public works committee meeting. We can have one tomorrow, yeah.
Can we do that Thursday?
Sure.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Or Thursday afternoon?
I have a Thursday, 2:00 meeting.
Oh, after that.
Probably 3:00, 3:30, Thursday.
Thursday, what, 3:00?
3:30 would probably work. I don't know how long that would take.
Okay, okay.
Anything else, Steve?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. From the mayor's side, I want to express appreciation to the Centerville Community Church. They are praying for the Goldendale City Council, that to me is an incredibly important help. When they're thinking of what we're doing, the business we conduct, and the impact on the community, prayers are something very, very special to a lot of people. And I think we appreciate that very, very much, to have that kind of support for a city council working in a community, Centerville Community Church, and we thank them all very much. And the next item is our city administrator, Pat Munyon. Did you have anything on department reports?
Like, we already did department reports, but.
You're on both places.
Oh. How do I get on both places?
So you didn't take that one off?
Well, we need to fix that, so I don't do that twice.
I really like you having two parts to the job, but.
You didn't take it off of the agenda part on the line?
Yeah. We'll correct the agenda part, take it off, so.
Okay. Now we'll go to open public comment. If anybody here in the council chambers are on the line for public comment. I see none. I don't hear anyone. With that, we'll close the open public comment portion of this meeting, and we now need to go to the executive session. And this is the one that we talked about and read the rules for. It has to do with litigation, and it has to do with RCW 42.30.110 bracket two litigation. With that.
And there won't be any decision afterwards.
No, there'll be no decision afterwards. We would like to open the executive session here in a moment.
And we will be out for 30 minutes.
And it's 30 minutes long.
Recording stopped.